I would like to call this board work session. Meet a meeting to order or March seventeenth, twenty twenty five at five oh three P M. All right, we'll have the invocation by Dr. Freddie Wilson.
Let us pray. Dear God, we're thankful to you for this another day, a day that we've never seen before. Your creative goodness and we're thankful that you allow us to be alive in this day. We thank you for your many blessings upon our families, upon our loved ones. We thank you for your blessing and guidance from this school system, the work that we're doing for our students. We pray for this board. We pray for all of our employees. We pray for this nation. We pray for the leaders of this nation. We pray for those in the hospitals and the nursing homes as that you have your way. We give thanks to you for this day. Now guide us in this meeting that we can make decisions that will benefit our students. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Information items, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five traditional school calendar, Mr. Bobby Locklear.
So good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So we again. So as always, in terms of when we're having conversations about the calendar, just very quickly again, walk through the school calendar law. So it is, we must start the Monday closest to August twenty sixth is dismissed. Students know later than the Friday closest to June eleventh. There are no waivers. We must cover at least nine calendar months and we must have one hundred and eighty five days or a thousand and twenty five hours. We have historically operated under the thousand and twenty five hours. We must have at least nine teacher workdays. We must have two workdays that teachers can take off. They must accumulate. We have a minimum of ten annual leave days. We operate under the same number of holidays that is released by the State Personnel Commission. And Veterans Day must also be a holiday. So we'll move back into the recommendation of the Calendar Committee for our for the twenty five, twenty six calendar. So if you will keep going down, Armand. There we go. So so this is the calendar that the Calendar Committee met and presented as our twenty five, twenty six calendar. You can see that we would start on, students would start on August twenty fifth, release on June the ninth. So we have a total of one hundred and seventy seven days in this calendar. Eleven of those days are holidays. Ten of those are annual leave days and we have a combination of seventeen teacher workdays. That give us a total of and cover the requirement of the law of teachers working or being paid for a total of two hundred and fifteen days. So this is the calendar that came out of the Calendar Committee.
All right, Mr. Trey Britt, question?
Mr. Bobby, where in our policy does it say anything about Calendar Committee?
We we do not in the policy. There's not mentioned to a Calendar Committee. We have historically operated under for the twenty years that I've been doing this. We've always had a Calendar Committee made up of principals, teachers, central office staff.
But we're not following policy is what we're saying because it's not in there that way. That there's a Calendar Committee is what we're saying there, right?
I can't say we're not following policy. Policy does not dictate that we have that we have a Calendar Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Emilio. All right, my Mr. Craig Light, then Dr. Emilio.
Mr. Bobby, the things that the calendar is supposed to meet, these requirements, who are they established by?
The calendar law establishes our guidelines. Then once the committee gets together, we plug in the pieces from beginning to end.
And the calendar that is presented meets all the requirements of that law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Emilio?
Thank you, Mr. Bobby, or whoever did this comparison. Appreciate it. I want to clarify something I said at the last board meeting when I said this calendar, the fairness with the days is for students. And here's what I meant by that, that the students have the opportunity. We need to give them the maximum amount of hours for teaching and learning. So they can learn the standards laid out by the standard course of study. They can learn the skills and abilities with the maximum number of hours and not be cut short. I don't see it as a popularity contest whether, you know, students and teachers find it more popular. I think it's a sense of fairness where the students can have that opportunity. Because the state and the standard courses study, they lay out this is what they have to learn this semester. And that's why they have the number of hours laid out there for those children to learn those standards. So when I said fairness and it's a student oriented calendar, I mean, number of hours, that's what I mean. I didn't mean that students like it and or teachers like it. I mean, it was laid out those number of hours for a reason, the fairness to students. That's why it's student oriented. Also, Bobby, I want to follow up on a comparison you had. Now tell me if I look at it wrong. Am I assuming that if we went with this proposed calendar that was adopted for Cumberland County? That there are eleven less days? How many less days are there in the first semester than there would be in our last semester?
So in comparison to the two calendars and we were going to walk through all of those later on. There are eleven less days between the calendar that the Calendar Committee is proposing versus the modified calendar that Mr. Terry shared with us at the last board meeting.
May I continue with one more point, Mr. Terry?
Yes, one more.
Okay, so this is a question for Ms. Erica. Ms. Erica, would that mean that cafeteria and bus drivers would get paid eleven less days first semester? That we get the chicks that would get paid eleven less days?
Ms. Saxon?
So I'll be honest, Dr. Emilio, I hadn't looked by semesters because we set the calendar based on the whole year. But it does mean for the course of the school year that they would get paid eleven less days.
They get paid by the hour, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be they would get paid. This is bus drivers, cafeteria workers. If we went with that, this is another avenue to look at. That all bus drivers and all cafeteria workers would get paid eleven less days if we went with this type of calendar, it wouldn't be equal to the last semester. So those are the points I'm raising and it's not a popularity contest. It's a contest. If you won't see it as a contest, that students get the same amount of hours first semester to learn the standards laid out by the state that they do last semester. It's a fairness and it's set up for students. That's what that was my point last board meeting. And I think it was taken wrong that I said I was indicated it was more popular. No, I did. It was made for students. And also there's a concern, I'm not sure bus drivers and cafeteria workers would reap the benefits of eleven less days to be paid. Thank you.
Mr. Trey Britt, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mr. Ms. Krista Monroe?
Is it working? This is just like, so I'm a great answer to. My big thing is the test thing before the Christmas break. So I'm just like looking at these calendars. They're going to be taking the tests from the twelfth to the sixteenth, so to speak, or the fifteenth. So the five days prior to that of them coming back from their Christmas break, what is the, to me, what is the difference? Like, what are they going to be? Is it just review? Because it's like five days. It's not a make or break. The grades aren't showing any different from before to after. So I'm just trying to figure out why there's such a discrepancy on having the tests before Christmas break.
Right. So so if you look at our traditional calendar, the Calendar Committee has come up with, principals and teachers historically use that week of the fifth through the ninth as a time to regroup and review. So they're able to bring those kids in, get them settled down, and then actually begin testing the week of the twelfth through the sixteenth. So if you look at applying that same methodology or same thought process to the other calendar in which teachers again take the last week, take the last five days for review and then the next five days for testing. You're really now eliminating back to probably about sixty six days of instruction, not counting the other interruptions that may take place or scheduled activities throughout the year. So for principals, their thought, and I think that has been shared, is that they bring those kids back in, get them settled, review, hit the key points and come in and test is very vital for them.
Ms. Chris, Ms. Monroe?
And I understand what they're saying, but like as the teachers and the students, because I've heard a lot of students would like it before. If the test scores aren't a big change in difference, what difference would it make for the extra? That's what I'm trying to figure out because the grades aren't changing whether they have the extra attendees or not. So that's what I'm just trying to figure out. The grades, nothing's changing besides. I can understand if the scores were higher and said, oh, there's proof that the kids are doing better testing prior, but it's not. So that's my thing is it's not a make or break decision on that extra week of. I'm just thinking most of the students that I've spoke to, I'm just talking about students and teachers. They they would like to go and have their testing before. So then once they're gone, teachers and students can have their break and not worry about anything. So when they come back, they start fresh. But that's what I was just trying to figure out. If it was a big difference in the scores, I could understand, but there's not. Anyway, that's not my thing.
And Ms. Monroe, to your point, it will change what administrators and counselors have to do during the Christmas break. Because if we test before we go home for Christmas, that means schedules have to be ready, scores, all that changes. Somebody's got to work during the Christmas break to be ready for second semester in January. So so that part of it would would change to that. In your board package, we did poll principals. In terms of looking at both calendars, it was it was clear. Every principal would love for this board to approve the calendar recommended for the Calendar Committee. The information is clear when Bobby was shared a comparison, but principals, as our instructional leaders now, every single one said they would rather operate all the calendar presented by the Calendar Committee.
Mr. Bradley Phillips, I have a question.
I have a question for Mr. Bobby. So if if we test before Christmas, you wouldn't have to review quite as long, right? Is that an accurate statement or do you have to review so long before you test?
Absolutely.
I just feel like if soon as you get done with the subject, if you test then before Christmas, I don't feel like you would have to review for eight days, ten days, or however long it is. That information is there immediately. You're not having to review what you lost during a Christmas break.
Yeah, but in the in the major difference between the two calendars is there's still that opportunity to review. But the other proposed calendar is a loss of eleven eleven instructional days in that first semester. So yes, review is going to take place in either testing before or testing after. But the issue with testing before is you sacrifice eleven instructional days. There's eleven days difference between the two calendars.
Mr. Terry, then we're going to have Mr. Trey, then Dr. Emilio.
I would say that in terms of the eleven instructional days that that you could, if you look at the way that the hours were calculated, the calendar that I proposed just had days. I mean, there's ways in which you can maximize hours. Add a little bit to the calendar before school starts, add ten minutes to the beginning, add ten minutes to the end, reduce resources by five minutes. That gives you twenty five minutes right there. So I mean, there's ways to make it work to maximize instructional hours. I would also argue that, you know, there's there's learning loss that occurs. There's plenty of research to support the idea that, I mean, if students are going to be out for three weeks before they take exams, then they got to come back and review for another week. What about all of the learning loss that occurs during during that break? So there's ways in which you can leverage that. And also to to Dr. Emmanuel's point that was made in the Curriculum Committee meeting earlier this month. She noted that she liked for students to be able to start college early. And if we have exams in December to follow along with with college calendars, then that would give students that are graduating early the opportunity to start college in the fall. They maybe would have maybe like if they're going to a university, they may have provisional admission. But that would that would help those individuals that that could graduate early and go ahead and start college in January.
Are we, are we moving to the principal survey results, is that what you were getting? Yes. Okay, well, um, one, I'm just gonna state this, when I first saw this in the packet, I didn't know it was gonna be in the packet, but thirty-eight principals didn't elect me, I'll just be upfront, the people of District Eight elected me. But now, in return, North Carolina general statute, actually, one fifteen C dash eight four two, when you look at the schedule, it says that local boards of education shall consult with parents and employee public school personnel in the development of the school calendar. In return of that, for what was mentioned earlier, days may be scheduled and planned for different purposes, for different personnel, and there is no requirement to schedule the same dates for all personnel. But um, I'll be upfront, I had some principals call me and tell me this poll once they, I guess, when they left here, wherever they met at, I don't know how it was done, but um, thing was, they didn't like was that their name was in it. I had two or three, met two that called me and told me that one in person. But in return, I, if you wanna know my truth, I think it's created some division. Because wherever that is calendar goes, somebody comes up to me and will say, well, your principal said so, it's such and such. How's that gonna make the teacher feel, how's that gonna make the principal feel?
Dr. Mano?
Um, I guess I'm confused, and this might be the law you need, needs to clarify. You said in your reading of that law that a school could make, school system could make the schedule what now? Would you read that and let the lawyer interpret that? Something about to make the schedule to their convenience or something, you read to that particular statement?
I'm sorry, Mr. Trey.
Do you mind, Mr. Cherry reads that, because I think that didn't click with my brain?
This is North Carolina general statute, one fifteen C dash eight four point two, school calendar, Mr. Schwartz. And on uh, let's see here, that would be...
Something to, to the fact that a...
Local, you were used to mention that local boards of education shall consult with parents and employee.
I got that, keep reading about a schedule.
The schedule. On the fifth subsection of that general statute, days may be scheduled and planned for different purposes, for different personnel, and there is no requirement to schedule the same dates for all personnel.
That, that's the part, how would that work? That, I'm not click, that's not clicking with my brain.
I, I, there's ideas and things that be tossed around that, but I'm just reading what the law says.
I understand, but I'm asking the law, what, what is that? I mean, I don't understand how that would click.
You could have different calendars for different schools, you could have different calendars that match up with uh, for year-round schools.
I understand.
And that sort of thing.
So in essence, the high schools could have a different calendar than at a Mitchell Middle if a district wanted, is that what you're saying?
That you could have a different calendar for every single school in the district if you wanted. Good luck.
That would be a financial nightmare.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so to address uh, because testing prior to Christmas truly only affects high schools. So the elimination of eleven days in that first semester, when we're talking about adding time to equal the eighty, I think it's seventy-seven versus eighty-nine or something to that effect, I would have to look at that. We would have to add an additional fifty-three minutes to every day to equal instructional time from seventy-seven days to the eighty-eight days. Fifty-three minutes would have to be added to the instructional day for the time to be the same.
Mr. Terry?
Based on my, based on my calculation, it was twenty-five minutes, but I'm not nearly as um, as versed in this as you are.
Bobby, fifty-three minutes would totally change our transportation.
Absolutely, transportation and athle- and your, that athletics would, would factor into that as well. Overtime for certain employees, teacher assistants, those folks that are not salaried, secretaries, power, powers, anyone who would be considered classified in the building.
Yeah, Miss, uh, Miss, Miss Crystal Monroe?
So when, years ago, when it was before Christmas, or before, yeah, Christmas, how did it affect everything back then and the time and the dates?
We, we were able to start school at the beginning of August, we were able, the calendar law at that point in time allowed us our own parameters to start and end. So we were not bound by the August twenty-sixth and June eleventh, beginning and end.
So, and I know going back to like Cumberland County and Harlan, Harnett County and other counties that are having the testing before, I mean, their score levels are of course higher than ours, and they're losing instructional time because they're starting the same time as we are. So I know I seen this letter from one of the Cumberland County about, because of the, what is it, um, the military, which I understand that, so they kinda helped that out. But that's what I'm trying to figure out is, I hear this being an issue, but then again, I'm seeing it everywhere else where it's not. So I'm just trying to figure out the difference between each school, and they're not doing fifty-three minutes or twenty, you know? So I, that's, I'm just trying to have a hard time adapting to what's the big deal, pretty much, when it comes down to it.
And, and so it, you, you are correct, there are other districts right now, it's probably a fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty split across the state. But to try to pinpoint one variable that makes the difference is impossible. So when we look at some of these other districts, they're, they have more instructional folks in the building, they have more financial resources. There are just different things that impact what the operations of a school. That's why it is left up to each LEA or PSU to determine the calendar that works best for them.
All right, um, thank you, any more questions for Mr. Bobby? Uh, Mr. Curry, I'm sorry.
Oh, this is just for, whatever it's worth, this kind of reiterating some things that I think different people said. Ms. Monroe, to, to your question as far as what is the difference? And I'm not sure it's the difference for everybody, but the, the, the difference and whether it matters on how they end up being final grades is the amount of time students are in class first semester, second semester on the two calendars. And you're in class eleven, that's ten or eleven days less, let's just say ten days less the first semester. And you would be the second semester on using the Cumberland County calendar. For some, I think that's not an issue. For others, it's uh, just say kid A is getting ten days less of chemistry the first semester than that kid is making, getting the second semester. Now, is that gonna affect the test scores of that child? I don't know. But they gonna get ten days less of information, that's what it amounts to. Okay, if I add the part of bus drivers and cafeteria workers, they're just gonna get paid less. If they got, if they're gonna work a hundred and sixty-seven days instead of a hundred and eighty, they're not gonna make as much money. Uh, and thirty years ago, part of my job was doing salaries and contracts for bus drivers. And when you take, it, it might not sound like much, but when you have a turnaround here and it gives you a dollar and you do it five times in a week, that's five dollars, don't sound like much, but it's a lot to those folks that are riding the bus or driving the bus. And you're looking at taking away some days from that for whatever it's worth. The other point, and I made a note here and I might have missed it, but the days and the bus driver cafeteria workers too, we've also talked about them, you know, losing days. So, does the test make a difference if we give it before or after? I still go back to my big premise is the days that kids lose of instruction. I forget what, I'm gonna forget what they make on the test, they're just gonna lose some instruction days if we go from, it's a hundred and seventy-seven days to a hundred and sixty-seven or whatever. Ten or eleven days, whatever it amounts to, they're gonna lose days. And for me, that just bothers me. And I will say this as far as calendar committee and, you know, I can't remember the laws, there's not a policy, but and not saying it makes it right because you've done it this long, but we've done calendar committees, I know since the nineties. Because I served on them in the nineties. So I know since the nineties or since it became public school, there's been calendar committees that put together one, whether we had a policy or not. There's a group that come together, took what the law says you had to do, for example, our Veterans Day, and then developed the calendar, sent out, sometimes it was two calendars, sometimes it was one calendar. But that's how a calendar over the years, just for history, that's how a calendar has been developed for the school system.
Uh, my final point is, and I think Bobby hit on this somewhat, uh, Mr. Phillips and Ms. Monroe and maybe others expressed the fact that uh, the basic thing they're gonna do when they come back is review, that's not necessarily correct, because just keep in mind now, they haven't finished teaching the concepts, objectives. Those teachers have to teach brand new material when they come back because they haven't finished. They may do some reviewing, quite naturally, but they're not gonna just review, review. They have to really teach because they haven't finished teaching the concept. So I just wanted to bring that point out, thank you.
Crystal?
I just um wanna, with the eleven days, even, I know the Cumberland County's schedule or the one that Terry had about like ending school on the twenty-fifth of May, but we could have still kept it in June and kinda worked around it, so they wouldn't be losing the eleven days. Because if you think about it, a lot of them days, if you go back to May twenty-fifth, when the kids would get out, that's where you're losing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's where you're losing your eleven days at. So it's not, I get where you're saying they're losing some instructional time. Back in December, they're gonna lose a week because they're not gonna be learning, they're gonna be preparing for the testing before Christmas. But the eleven days that they are losing is at the end of the year. So it's not saying we could still go to June twenty-ninth. I think our biggest thing is that the kids and the teachers want the testing before Christmas. At, at the end of the day, it's not so much changing the whole calendar.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, you, you can't go to June twenty-ninth.
I mean, not June twen- I'm sorry, June ninth.
Okay.
That's right, I'm sorry, June ninth.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, so Ms. Monroe, I think what you're saying, so again, as I stated earlier, testing prior to Christmas truly only impacts high schools. So those eleven days, if we were just to tack them on to the end of the year, would then create an inequity in second semester that we would have a hundred-day semester. So we would have, first semester would be seventy-seven, second semester would be a hundred days.
She counted on. Again, all right, any, anymore for Mr. Bobby? All right, next we have um, Mr. Terry, you got anything about the Cumberland County calendar?
I really don't have a whole lot to say, say about the, the calendar that I proposed. You know, that's a, that's a detailed conversation that I think is left up to the, the district to, to sort of figure out. I mean, if y'all wanted to really determine what Cumberland County was doing or what these other counties were doing to make it successful, I feel like you should have reached out to them. You didn't mind reaching out to them when it came to uh getting letters and videos and everything else when you wanted us to, when you're pushing for us to get those yonder bags. So I will let y'all um deal with that when, when time comes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry. Let's, let's go ahead and bring this thing to a vote, anybody wanna make a motion or anything? Anybody got a motion? Mr. Terry?
I'll make a motion that we um, uh, that we move forward with the uh calendar where students can take exams uh before uh they get out for Christmas.
Motion being made by Mr. Terry, take it, okay, motion been made in the second, now Ms. Melissa?
I make a substitute motion that we accept the calendar as um presented by the ca- by the cabinet.
Um, but there's been a secondary motion on the table, Ms. Melissa, do we have a second? Uh, second been made by Dr. Mano, all in favor say, all in favor say aye? All opposed? Let's go by the hands, show of hands? What, all right, we got it, all in favor, all in favor, by the show, raise your hands. Oh, the calendar that's presented, that's calendar that's presented by Dr. Uh, by Mr. Bobby Locklear. All of show, raise your hands, all in favor of that calendar, and we're gonna be tested before Christmas, so by the raise your hands. Oh, I've tested after, Chris, I'm sorry.
The motion was to accept the calendar as presented by the calendar committee at administrations, correct?
Yes. Yes, that's the motion brought out, I'm so sorry. All opposed? Okay. How long till you mic him, Mr. Henry? Go ahead.
I think we, we're going through an evolution of change. We um, we adopted a curriculum, we all presented that. Now we're into the calendar, the calendars come up every year as discussion. I talked to Senator Britt this morning. He's telling me that every senator in the state of North Carolina has presented a bill in the senate, and the majority whip, Mr. Phil Berger, has shot it down. Um, even Senator Britt's in agreement that testing before Christmas is probably the right thing to do. I've talked with um, men, Dr. Williamson, if you don't mind me saying, have talked briefly. He's in agreement too, but the, but the thing is, we got to be able to meet the rest of the guidelines that's stated by the state and the federal government. And this possibly affects federal grant monies. So I'm, I'm at the point that my colleagues or, or people, I've been flooded with phone calls to vote against the regular calendar. So in support of my voters and, I'm go- I'm gonna have to go against the, the regular calendar, but we gonna have to work it out, we gonna have to figure it out. It's just, it's gonna take some work, if we can't, we can't.
All right. So. It's, it's um, so right now is five-five. Is that correct? All six, five. All right, by the show favors, uh, by the show, who's voting with the calendar, with the calendar that's presented? Who's vote with the calendar that was presented by Mr. Bobby, the current calendar? No, um, it's not, they got um, one, two, three, four, five, they got six, they have six, five, if it's him going against, they have six, five. All in fr- all opposed, by the show, raise your hands? It's still, it's still five-five, it's him, there's no, uh, a no vote.
The, the motion, the substitute motion by Ms. Ocean fails on a five-five vote.
Yep.
So now you're up to the main motion that was made by Mr. Locklear and seconded by um, Ms. Fields to move forward with the calendar where we have uh exams before Christmas. To have, move forward with a calendar where we have exams before Christmas.
All right.
That was not, as I understand your, your motion, Mr. Locklear, it was not to approve the calendar that you presented, but to move forward with the calendar where we would have exams before Christmas, is that correct?
All right, so all in favor of the, having the exams before Christmas, uh, nobody show hands, all in favors? All opposed?
Wait, can we, can we see that again, I go, we gotta record the vote, sorry.
Same score.
Okay.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, so.
This is six, same.
But hold on a second, it's Mr. Brewer's voting here now.
Yeah, Mr. Brewer, Ms. uh, Fields, um, Bradley. Yeah, Mr. Brewer, Ms. Fields, Bradley, Ms. Terry, Ms. Monroe.
Okay, so that's six.
Yeah.
Vote against.
I vote against.
So the motion passes.
Yeah, the motion passed. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? A lot of questions? All right, let's go. Ms. Craig?
Question now, we voted to do exams before Christmas. We didn't vote on the calendar.
Correct.
Are we going to vote on using the calendar Mr. Bobby presented? Or are we going to vote on using the calendar Mr. Terry presented? Or are we going to come back now with another calendar? Because we didn't vote on the calendar.
Right, may I?
Got.
Okay, so.
Crystal Wilson.
I think that's the question. We cannot afford to penalize K8 schools 11 days. And so to your question, Ms. Craig, I think then that we put a third calendar on the table. That is that K8 use the calendar presented by the Calendar Committee, and high schools use the Cumberland County calendar that Terry, you need to work out.
Yeah.
All right.
Follow up.
All right, Mr. Dr. Emmanuel, then we're going to have Ms. Melissa, then we're going to have Mr. Craig. In that order.
Okay, am I first?
Yes.
All right, now, say that one more time, what you propose, superintendent?
Okay, so the K8 schools cannot afford to lose 11 instructional days.
Yes.
So my proposal would be that K8 adopt the calendar presented by the Calendar Committee, and then 6-5 says that the high schools will have to use Cumberland County's calendar.
Okay, good. Now, my question is, so it will be a problem. Is there any place that EC transportation and/or K8 transportation, do they depend on the high school in any way for any transportation? Would there be a conflict? I'm speaking of EC transportation and all of that.
Bobby can probably better answer that question.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, there will be a conflict in EC transportation.
All right, Ms. Melissa Ocean, then you, then you, Mr. Henry. She was, hands up raised first. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess my question is, so now we're going to split the district. We're going to have K8 on one schedule, high school on another schedule, but everybody's in the same place. So now in high school, we have these bad weather days. How are we going to build all this into that calendar that doesn't cover any of this stuff?
That's correct. If we have enough weather days, our only option would be after Christmas is to cut spring break. That's the only option. Once we get out of Christmas and into second semester, the only place is spring break.
So if we have a year like we had this year where there's three days of bad weather, that's spring, the high school kids have no spring break?
We have to cut it, make those days.
To me, this is absolutely, it's ludicrous that a calendar hasn't been drug, we've been dragging it this long. None of us educate at this currently. We don't, we're not in the schools. And this does not seem to be in the best interest of our children. This is seeming like somebody standing on principle or somebody calling you and telling you what they want done, and then you come in here and passing down to these kids. It just doesn't seem fair to me. It does not.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Chair, I really haven't heard any conversation about anything other than adopting somebody else's calendar. What if we had a workshop? And I've had suggestions made to me like, what happened to going to school on Saturdays a half a day? What about cutting out teacher half-day workdays or whatever? They're saying, what I'm being told is that we need to get rid of the extras and work it into the legal time of giving instructional time and narrow it down. I don't know if we can do that or not.
Mr. Terry?
I just got one comment about the survey that was done with principals. There's a concept called manufactured consent. And through manufactured consent, leaders can use leverage to gain consent from individuals. And I'm not suggesting that these principals can't think on their own, but I am suggesting that if I know, you know, as an employee, if I know my boss wants to go a certain way, I'm going to figure out how to go that certain way with him, him or her. So I'm just going to keep that in mind. When's the last time you heard of 35 or 36 adults agreeing on something? You can't even get that in church. So I'll just leave that right there.
All right, yes, Dr. Emman?
On my own, Mr. Terry, now do you think that was fair? Because you weren't there. That was just not fair. Thank you.
Mr. Craig?
Let's see. Saying we're going to come back, it's not necessarily using the calendar they have from Cumberland County for high schools. We're going to develop a calendar, or we're going to use the high school from Cumberland. We're going to use Cumberland County.
So a modified calendar, the calendar law and general statute has been read to us, correct? Over and over. And so that's the board's calendar or at least six board members' calendar.
Okay, that law, the calendar from Cumberland County, if we're going to use that for the high schools, and this might be Dr. Williamson or Mr. Bobby, does that calendar, as it is, with testing before Christmas, does this meet all the 11 components of the law that we had read to start with? Now, if it doesn't, put it down somewhere in record today that Craig Lowry is not going to support it. If it does not, I'm not going to knowingly sit here and vote for something that is not complying to the laws of this state with DPI or whoever, irregardless of what other people say. So that's the reason I want to know, is it this calendar or are we going to develop a new calendar? Because the one that we're going to put out that I'm going to support is going to have to comply to the law as it exists. If it doesn't, I won't support it, and I want to clearly know that I didn't support it.
So the calendar that we see on the board does comply with general statute in terms of school calendar law?
Ever think this theory does comply?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I may add, I think to Ms. Monroe's point is that this, the other proposed calendar, and this is very crucial, does not have the opportunity for bank days. If we, or Ms. Ocean, I'm sorry. If we have inclement weather, that calendar does not allow us the opportunity, like we've had this year, to kind of say, kids, we're going to eat those days in terms of you have enough time. That calendar does not allow us to bank days.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Craig, okay, hold on.
Mr. Chairman, what bank days has done? It's eliminated over the years of Saturday school.
Yes.
Going to school during Christmas vacation or Easter vacation. There was one other that we used to have to do all, teacher workdays. You took teacher workdays. Those three things was always a part of if you missed school day. The bank days over the last several years has eliminated that. And folks, everybody in here knows, Saturday school is a joke. You made up a day, that's what you did, you made up a day. But, you know, half a day was a joke. Coming into taking the other vacation days, you know, people's got used to that. But without bank days, if we have bad weather days, that's what's going to happen.
Ms. Crystal Monroe?
I just, to go on the bank days and the weather days. Since COVID, we've been doing a lot of online and virtual. So I feel like if we were in them cases, it could be virtual like we have been doing. I'm just saying hypothetically. My only concern through all this was that the kids test before Christmas. I mean, I've had a lot of students, when I was in Greensboro, there was students there that were on the stage and they asked questions, and that was their biggest thing, was taking the test before Christmas. And that's the reason why I am going with that. I just want to make that known, that as far as the calendar, we could have agreed and made a calendar where it goes to June and makes it and moved dates around for the semesters. And I feel like everybody would have been happy, but it just doesn't seem like that is trying to be done right at this point. But I just want to make that, like, I appreciate everything, but that is where I stand with that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so since COVID, we have to submit a remote learning plan, and we are only allowed to obligate five days to remote learning throughout the school year. So anything beyond those five days, we will be breaking the law.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Chair, I know I voted, but the thing is, if we don't meet the state requirements and whatever calendar comes up, I'm not going to stick with that. We've got to meet the state requirements. We can't chance federal funds.
Mr. Terry?
Mr. Schwartz, have we, do any of these two calendars violate the school law? In federal or state?
No.
Okay. And also, I'm still trying to figure out why we need two different calendars. Why can't we have the same calendar for high school and elementary?
Why should the elementary school kids suffer? They don't take tests before Christmas and have their days taken. Those kids are more prone to be sick or need days off. They're smaller kids, so I don't understand why. None of this affects them anyway. This is only about high school.
And so if I may, Mr. Chair, to answer Mr. Terry's questions, as Dr. Williamson stated earlier, our K8 schools cannot sacrifice losing 11 instructional days. That is the reason that we are requesting a high school calendar that's being proposed where tests occur before Christmas, and then that we allow our K8 schools to remain on this calendar.
Do other districts do that? Have two different calendars, one for high school and one for?
We already have two different calendars and stuff. We have early college calendar that they follow, and high school calendar that they follow. And before Mrs. Trey Britt read that general statute, and it said we could come up with different calendars. And that's what Mr. Richard stated before we started discussing this. You could have, as many as every school can have their own calendar if you wanted to.
As far as the bank days or as far as the adverse weather days, I don't know, I mean, you really can't plan for that because sometimes you have snow in the spring and hurricanes in the fall. So that's just something we'll have to contend with when it gets here.
Yes, but I think also having days and stuff banked, it also helps to prevent stuff, preventing them from doing different stuff or coming to school, taking kids Easter break or taking kids days away from Christmas time. Or, like I said, coming to school on Saturdays, which, like I said, is joking. I don't think nobody's going to send their kid to school on a Saturday. I don't, not this day and time. Mr. Bradley Phillips?
It just feels like, it just feels like so much confusion has been created. A calendar was presented, it was not approved. It was brought up again, this very same calendar, nothing changed. And it weren't approved again. And here we sat discussing the calendar. We don't know the best way to create a calendar. We don't know all these guidelines that has to be built in. I feel like you guys should have built a calendar to show us what it would have looked like to test before Christmas, and it would eliminate all this confusion. And here we sat diverse and confused. It doesn't make sense.
Mr., did you, Dr. Emmanuel, you got, hold on.
We confused about Mr. Bradley. Tell us what the confusion is. I'm not confused, but tell me what the confusion is.
Mr. Bradley?
Maybe I should be confused, explain to me.
I guess confusion could come from, all right, now we're talking about three possible calendars. When it could have been laid out to begin with, and we wouldn't even have to sit here and discuss all this stuff. We don't know the ends, I say we, I've never taught in a building, I know how to run a business. I don't know exactly how many days or how many instructional hours has to be put in the calendar until we sit here and read it. It's the job of Central Office that could have provided us a separate option, and we wouldn't even have to sit here and bounce different thoughts around if this is going to line up with federal funds, if this is going to affect this person or if it's going to affect that person. So I feel like there's some confusion in the room. Maybe you're not confused, but maybe some of us are.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
So again, now, 11 lost instructional days, 11 days of lost pay because that's what's going to happen. So we need to be clear. So, Ms. Schwartz, how can we, can I put a motion for a K8 calendar? How can we do that? Because again, I do not see penalizing K8 schools 11 lost instructional days. Can't penalize and clear conscience, I'm not going to support taking 11 days of pay from, sort of, from our employees. Not, and then we open ourselves up to, because when that's happened in other districts. For instance, Colville County. Right, parents filed, and they had to go back and change the calendar. And so if we can avoid all that, but in clear conscience, and those principals are instructional leaders. They support the calendar because they understand the loss of 11 instructional days. They understand the loss of pay 11 days for our employees. They understand that, so why force them to do anything?
All right, we're going to have Ms. Kristi Fields, then Ms. Crystal Monroe.
So let's be clear, the reason that we're even starting at the time we are in August is because businesses did not want to lose revenue. That's really why we're starting at the end of August, and we don't have that flexibility anymore. Additionally, again, to Mr. Bradley's point, we voted down the first calendar. We weren't presented with an alternative. And now we're trying to make this look like a whole big issue when at the end of the day, it is not. Central Office is able to come up with an alternative calendar. We are not here to make people's lives difficult. We can all work together to make that happen.
Ms. Crystal Monroe?
The only thing that I'm with, what Dr. Williamson just said about the 11 instructional days. So technically, from the Cumberland County, it's, what, 166? And we're 177. So if you go back and you go from May 26th to June 9th, that's your 11 days that we could just put back on the calendar. Or that's not going to work. Because that would be the 177 days. Now, I get what you're saying at the beginning because of the first semester. Like, that's where I'm just trying to have a hard time understanding.
So what, in essence, that does, that does include back 11 lost instructional days. But it creates an inequity in the fact that first semester for high school kids would only be 77 days. Second semester would then turn around and be 100 days. So as Mr. Craig spoke earlier about, there would be a chemistry class where kids would get 77 days of instruction. Then there would be a second chemistry class in the spring where kids would get 100 days of instruction.
If I may.
Dr. Wilson?
Dr. Carr or Dr. Dallas, our summer school is scheduled for when?
I'm sorry. Okay.
June 16th through June 27th.
That becomes important now because course credit, grade promotion, graduate, all that's tied to summer school that if we have to carry that over into a new fiscal year and a new school year. and a new school year, you're gonna see retentions go up and some other issues go up if we have to go into July.
Right? And I'm not the best in math. But you say the hundred days, is that two semesters together? Cause like when I'm counting, like I have forty in the first semester, forty-eight the second, forty-one and fifty. That's what I'm counting right now with what you guys are presenting. Am I wrong? Is that, am I not getting the numbers?
So you're counting nine weeks?
I'm just counting every nine weeks, yes.
So that would make.
I'm going by the testing, cause they're gonna test before Christmas, so to speak, which would be after, there's the first semesters in October and then that. So that's what I was gonna say, so I'm just looking at the difference in the, the days.
Yeah, so on, on the calendar that came from the calendar committee that you see here, uh, we tried to equally divide those semesters, so first semester is eighty-eight days, second semester is eighty-nine days. On the modified calendar that came from Cumberland County, first semester was seventy-seven, second semester was eighty-nine. So if we took those eleven lost days from first semester and put them into second semester, you now have a second semester that is a hundred days.
Also, Mr. Bobby, I wanna, how do, uh, how else does that affect some of the stuff that we, um, already have planned, like, uh, like our big shootout and all kinda stuff like that? Because I know you can't, when doing testing and stuff, we cannot play, I, I think there's a rule that we cannot play, or they cannot play sports and stuff during tests.
That is, that is correct, so anytime exams are scheduled, we cancel all athletic events for that time. There are no after-school activities during that time. So if the shootout would be scheduled starting, I think we've tried to do that to help protect principals break, uh, anytime during that week of December fifteenth through the nineteenth, uh, shootout would be moved back because we do not allow athletics during, uh, exam time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The motion that passed was to move forward with a calendar where we could have exams before Christmas. That's the motion. There's not a calendar that's been passed. It's, the Cumberland County calendar has been passed. Superintendent recommended now two different calendars. The board could give, for, uh, three different calendars?
Three different calendars, because the, cause we already got one for.
Right, for the, for, right. Um, the, the board could give parameters to the administration with a request to come forward at the April board meeting with proposed calendars that meet whatever parameters the board wants to be considered in addition to all of the parameters that are required by the school calendar, which are extensive. Unless you're ready to approve calendars based on what you have in front of you now.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, extend the opportunity back to, uh, superintendent and, and, uh, the calendar committee or whomever to work in the guidelines by the state in a way that we can, uh, have some options to look at that will possibly give us the opportunity to test before Christmas and bring it back to the next, uh, call meeting or regular meeting.
Do we have a second? Alright, a motion been on the floor that, um, by Mr. Henry Brewer, that we give the superintendent and the cabinet and the cap, um, and the calendar committee, um, to, to produce a calendar that's set by the parameters of the state that we will test be- before Christmas. Make sure we, uh, follow all the guidelines that are represented by the state that we can test before Christmas. And a second, with by Mr. Crystal Monroe. Um, do you got a question, Mr. Craig?
Now, is that calendar gonna just be for the high schools? And then we're gonna need another motion to adopt the calendar that's been presented for K through eight? So is this motion just dealing, for coming with the new one? Is it just one, Mr. Henry, dealing with high schools?
Mr. Henry, that's on you.
That's it.
Yes, dealing with the high schools. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, why don't we wait till that committee comes back? Because they may incorporate something that's gonna work for all levels.
Yeah, um, the superintendent already, um, said that, if we have a, he's not gonna miss eleven instructional days for a K eight. So he already said, if we adopt a new calendar that we test before, he will need to have a separate calendar for K eight.
Okay, then that will go back to high school.
Alright, so this only dealing with high school, we only, all, uh, all in favor say aye?
So, so the, the motion now is modified, Mr. Brewer, to ask the administration to bring back to the board recommendations to the board that would meet the school calendar law and allow for testing before exams for grades nine, twelve. And need to, to verve rather second on that, Mr. Monroe?
All in favor say aye? All opposed?
Can you call for the vote again?
All in favor say aye? All opposed?
It's unanimous.
Yes, yeah, we got it. Now, do we, Mr. Craig, do you?
And, um, I'll make a motion that we adopt the calendar presented by the, uh, cabinet for K eight for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Alright, a motion has been on the floor by Mr. Craig Lowery to adopt, uh, the calendar that's presented for K eight. Um, and it'll be the second by, uh, Dr. Emmanuel, all in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, yeah, okay. Alright, do we, you got anything else?
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I may, for clarity, so parameters for the high school calendar, test before Christmas, are those the only parameters that the committee needs to deal with?
Yes, test before Christmas, as long as it follows the state, the guideline, the state guidelines and stuff, that's it. Alright, do we got a motion to adjourn? The motion to adjourn by Ms. Crystal Monroe, do I got a second? Second by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor say aye? We did. We adjourned.